All right, we'll call the July 16th Planning Commission meeting to order. Looking around, we have a quorum. I don't -- Ms. Carolyn, no one signed up for public comments, did they?
No, I listened.
All right. So, the first item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience or on the board that would like any of the consent agendas brought up as part of the regular meeting? And if not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move.
Second.
Ms. Ava Water?
I'm staying.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
All right. The first item on the agenda after consent is Plats and Plans. The first one for consideration is City Barbecue, a site plan for 2,972 square feet restaurant on 1.43 acre zone commercial highway located along North Thompson Lane. City Barbecue LLC is the developer. Mr. Barbie?
Good afternoon, Chair Halliburton.
You're going to talk about this application, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
All right.
This next application before you today is an application from City Barbecue. City Barbecue is proposed to be located along Thompson Lane, just south of Sam Walton Drive. This is immediately adjacent to an application reviewed at your last day meeting for Bubba's 33. This one is located more than this area here for the former skate park, and I believe there was a medical clinic was also located there previously. Access to the lot will be provided through a shared access easement to the north with Bubba's 33, as well as a in -- right in, right out, located along North Thompson Lane here, and a connector as well here to, again, Bubba's 33. Building architecture is compliance -- or parking is in compliance with the standards. We do have some -- oh, let me back up. Parking is not currently in line with the standards, as we understand it. We are working with the design team and architect to make sure that the counts are matching up and to determine if any additional spaces will need to be added to match the seating capacity of the restaurant. Building architecture is compliant with the design guidelines. It's mostly a brick building with some ephes at the very top behind where the City Barbecue sign is located, but the majority of the building is brick. They do have one covered porch on the -- covered patio on the front for outdoor dining, and they will have three smokers located along the north side of the building. That's part of the branding, and it's how they -- they're located outside, but they're actually fueled and serviced and fed from the inside of the building. So, that's where they'll be located. They are going to be screening that with a composite fencing material for both safety and to break up the view shed of those structures. Other than parking, the site is generally in good order, and staff would request that any approval be made to -- be made subject to staff comments.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Barbie. Any questions or comments for Mr. Barbie?
Jamie, you got parking questions?
No.
We already know there's an issue.
All right. No questions. Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval, subject to staff comments.
Second.
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is Singer Park, Lot 2, site plan for two multi-tenant office warehouse buildings totaling 18,000 square feet on 1.6 acre zone, light industrial, located along Northwest Broad Street. Michael Hazlett is the developer. Mr. Barbie?
Good afternoon again. This application is located along Northwest Broad Street, just south of Singer Road. Adjacent properties to the north and south are also zoned light industrial as well. These two 9,000 square feet buildings are proposed to be a mixture of office warehouse space, previously kind of referenced as business incubator, so that they would be able to fit multiple different uses within those two structures. Solid waste is managed through a solid waste enclosure located on the southwest or southeast corner of the property, and access to this phase will be through the previous Phase 1, located at the intersection of Singer Road and Northwest Broad Street. Building architecture is in front of you now. This building may seem familiar to you. This is the same building with some minor material color changes that was constructed at 710 Middle Tennessee Boulevard. So, you have seen this building and base materials previously. There is one comment on the staff report that we would like to modify. The applicant's been working with our public infrastructure department regarding the connection to Northwest Broad Street. We'd like to revise the comment that the second full access entrance to Northwest Broad Street will be constructed -- that needs to be constructed with this project. We'd like to change that to the second full access to Northwest Broad Street will be constructed with the next project within the development, meaning that the next project that comes in for the Singer Park development, that this entrance would be constructed with it.
Mr. Barbie, can you scroll up to the site plan so you can show them which access you're talking about?
Yes, there's not. We're referring to this access point here that would be on the next section of development. Currently, the access point is the shared access easement across the initial phase, as well as this point here that is also in the initial phase. Other than that, the project is generally in good order, and we would request that any approval be made subject to staff comments, including that modification to the comment regarding the next entrance.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Barbie on this application? And if not, do we have a motion?
So moved, subject to all staff comments. Second.
A motion, second.
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Next item is Greenland Drive Townhomes, site plan for 14 single-family attached dwelling units on 1.6 acre zone RM16, located at the corner of Greenland Drive and Given Court. Bon Air Adventures is the developer. Ms. Smith, how are you?
Good afternoon, Commission. As you can see on the screen ahead, the area highlighted in yellow represents the areas for this particular townhome project. It actually involves predominantly two full parcels and then a very small portion of the one that's labeled 722 Given Court. And that one, the plat that you just approved, preliminary plat, actually will take a little bit of that off of that particular property, meeting their five-foot side yard setback, and then the other side yards, the back and the front, would actually continue to be a legal non-conforming lot, but not make it any less legally non-conforming. This particular lot, when you look at all of the standards, this is a standard RM16 bulk zoning, so it does meet all of the standards for minimum lot width. Front setbacks here, because it is a corner lot, we're looking at a 30-foot and a 30-foot, but your other setbacks will be based on that two-story building, which is actually a 15-foot setback that will be towards the back of that property. The density that they're looking at is 8.75 units to the acre, which is less than the maximum nine units to acre sewer allocation that were allowed in this particular area. And then parking, all of these 14 units are all two-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, so 31 would normally be your parking requirements, and they're providing 43 when you include those handicap stalls, which averages out to a little bit more than three stalls per townhome unit, and all of those are just surface parking, no enclosed garage, so there's not a place to store all kinds of stuff instead of your car. So, those standards are met. The adjacent properties are RM16 as well, so there will not be any regular buffer requirement, but they will have a regular perimeter planting yard as part of their project. Those lots, if you'll notice, the depth of that lot is very long. Normally, we would want to have our primary frontage facing towards Greenland. Here, you can see the corner of that property of Greenland and Given, looking southerly towards the south side of Given, that has no sidewalk curb or gutter down Given, but we have full sidewalk curb and gutter along Greenland. So, we are looking at there being sidewalk installed with curb and gutter down this side of Given as part of the project, and then we're also looking at the removal of the existing structure that still is on the property with some of their ancillary buildings that are also on the site. In looking at their site layout, the way everything slopes actually slopes towards the intersection area, and because of that and the very elongated site, the orientation to where the stormwater is going to be located will actually be on the corner of the property. So, as we're looking, one more, there we go. The grading, you can see there's a very large ponding basin that will be on the corner. However, there will be landscaping around the top of that basin area, and then they also are having a small pocket pet park for their formal open space area, as well as fencing down the backside to separate the adjacent existing apartment units that are directly in back of this, and then there are some single-family residents to the south of this particular project. Of note, on this project is the architecture of one last thing. So, pet park is just some very standardized fencing around the entirety, benches, walkways to access it, and of course, fencing around that site. Here's the architecture elevations in a rendered colorized version. So, they actually have one building's a five-unit building, one's a six, and one's a three-unit building. So, the ones that are facing the end cap, this is what you would see on the end of Greenland Drive, so there would actually be an entry that faces that primary street. That same enhanced elevation will also be on the end cap facing Given for that area, so that that way it's not just everything facing to the west. And so, when you look at those elevations, the backside of the property, there is a brick water table around the entirety of the building. There's regular hardy siding around kind of that middle section, and then, as you'll notice on the top, there are some lower-level roofs that are standing seam, accent roofs over front porches, and then the back portion has a kind of a porch slab with some separating fence portions. To give you an idea of what those elevations might look like, staff just cut and pasted kind of their layout, and I believe the intent is, is that when they do put together those units, here we go, here might be what you might see on a six unit, just the idea is as if we can get some balance would be suggested, and then you can see that bottom one with the three unit, where you have kind of that pop-out entry that would face Given Court. Based on all of the standards, they meet all of our city standards for bulk zoning. I think they've done a great job putting together their architecture. They really wanted something that was more unique, a little bit more colorful. I said as long as they're not screaming bright colors. That's the only thing our code says, is no bright colors for their primary color palette. They would be good to go. So, we appreciate Mr. Trout and SEC working with staff to get you a building that really does not look like apartments. Mr. Trout has stated that he'd like to be able to sell them as individual units and potentially will do an HPR, but we don't require that they do that, and sometimes people do change their minds later on, but that's what they have stated that their intent is. So, if we have any questions, this is not a required public hearing. It's just a straight Planning Commission review and a final approval, and SEC is present in case there's any questions regarding drainage or any of the other improvements on site.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Smith and/or the applicant?
Yeah. The total amount of parking space, is that 43?
So, 40 regular spaces and three handicap spaces for a total of 43, and those are all on-site for 14 units.
Any other questions, comments, or a motion?
Is there going to be a fence around the detention pond, like a wood fence or something?
I have not seen that there is. Usually, engineering will take a look at it, and if it's too much of a depth, they might require it, but I don't believe I've heard us talking about that. I think it's maybe about four feet in depth.
Yeah, it's not very deep. I'm just curious.
Yeah, and usually the landscaping will kind of serve as a, you know, a more natural-looking barrier.
If not, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, subject to staff comments.
Second.
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Thank you, Commission.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the City of Murfreesboro South Transfer Station, site plan for a 67,850-square-foot municipal facility and associated accessory buildings located on 32-acre zone, heavy industrial at 2120 Kenny Pipe Court. The City of Murfreesboro is the developer, and we're glad to have you, Ms. Carroll.
Thank you, Chair Halliburton, members of Planning Commission. This site review covers Phases 1 and 2. The City of Murfreesboro South Transfer Station, it's a 32-acre property located at 2120 Butler Drive, north of Joby Jackson Parkway and east of Butler Drive. The main facility of this development is a 67,850-square-foot materials-managed facility, including a two-story office building, and it has a height of 41 feet. Additionally, there will be both inbound and outbound scales for -- and scale houses. Those will be 9,000, and a 9,000-square-foot open storage bend, that's going to house some street sweepers in that facility, and then there's going to be 4,000-square-foot of assault barn coming off of Butler Drive. There's going to be a 1,275-square-foot brine system next to the assault barn. Then there's also going to be a canopy with a 20,000-gallon diesel tank and fuel dispenser with a canopy. The site has two access points, one off of Kenny Pipe Drive, which was basically comprised when they relocated Butler Drive. So, Kenny Port Drive, that will be where the solid waste trucks will come in, and then there will be access on Butler Drive for the actual street department workers that will be coming in, and maintenance workers for the salt trucks and the fuel stations. Site parking is required to have 1.5 spaces for each two employees on the largest shift. Required parking is 10 spaces, proposed is 19 spaces. Landscaping, the design team is working with staff to develop a fully compliant landscaping plan for this site project. The landscaping plan will require a type-A buffer along this area here with the commercial site in front of it, and then it will have a standard buffer along the adjacent properties in the unincorporated portion of Rutherford County. The building architecture, for the materials management facility, is clad on all four sides with concrete wall panels at the base. Those are tilt-up panels, and then metal walls making up the body, and then there is eaves with the gabled roof that provides the finished cap on this particular structure. The associated buildings around the site will also have the same architectural style and materials. Staff will continue to work with the design team to fully have a compliant architectural plan. After careful review of the South Transfer Station, staff believes the plan is generally in good condition, meeting minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance and design guidelines. Staff recommends approval of the plans, and subject to all staff comments and the continued collaboration with staff and the design team. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have, as well as Ryan Maloney with Rick Griggs and Maloney, to answer any engineering questions you may have.
So, who will, like, in the planning department, who will be the ultimate person that says this is the way the landscaping's going to be?
That would be worked out with Mr. Barbie.
Okay.
He will be helping them design and make sure that it meets all the guidelines.
Okay.
Are those above-ground diesel tanks?
They are.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions on this application? If not, do we have a motion?
Move for approval, subject to staff comments.
Second. Do we have a motion and second?
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Next, we move into new business. The first item under new business is a mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of a segment of Kenny Pipe Court right-of-way located north of Joby Jackson Parkway. City of Murfreesboro Public Works Division is the applicant. Ms. Carroll?
I've got it pulled up, Amelia, if you want to go ahead. The cable department gets switched to my computer. It's okay. Here we go, it's pulled up, Amelia.
This is a mandatory referral. The planning department is being asked to -- the Planning Commission is asking to be consider the abandonment of a segment of Kenny Pipe Drive. That was the portion of the property or the right-of-way that was eliminated when the new Butler Drive was redirected, and this is a remnant of that roadway, and it is currently now Kenny Pipe Court. Prior site plan for the South Transfer Station was submitted to the Planning Department, included this area on that site plan, so that's the reason for this request. The right-of-way requested to be abandoned is also owned by T.DOT, and the city is in the process of going through a T.DOT excess right-of-way abandonment process. Because the street occupies the right-of-way question, the city is also moving forward with its own right-of-way abandonment process, so that the city can abandon any right-of-way interest that it has in the property as well. The planning department has reached out to utilities and other city departments for comments regarding the impacts of abandoning this right-of-way. Staff will provide the Planning Commission with a summary of those comments at its public hearing. Planning Commission will need to discuss this right-of-way abandonment and schedule a public hearing. Staff recommends a Planning Commission to schedule a public hearing date for August 6th.
Thank you. Any questions on this application? And if there's not, we need a motion to set it for a public hearing.
Move to set the public hearing for August 6th.
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is a zoning application for approximately 2.05 acres located along East Pitts Lane to be rezoned from commercial fringe to commercial highway. Murfreesboro Medical Clinic is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
Good afternoon again, Commission. As you can see on the screen above, the highlighted area in dark green is what we would refer to as the parent parcel that was annexed and zoned a couple of years ago to a CF Zone District. Currently, MMC is constructing their clinic in this location, and there are future lots anticipated for these two locations, and then this one to the south with all of the ponding for the entire site being served in this particular area. They currently are looking at a developer that would like to install a freestanding emergency room at the location, and when we look at our zoning code, really, staff has determined it fits into our definition of hospital. So, it may not meet, you know, what most people might think, but for our definitions, when we look at our zoning code, that's the specified zone district, and CF does not allow for a hospital. It's one of the few that does not, although most of our districts do allow for a hospital. So, what they're asking for is a change of that zoning to a CH Highway Commercial Zone District, which would allow for a hospital-type use and be able to handle that freestanding emergency room. Adjacent to the site, there is county kind of commercial properties in this area, Dollar General Gas Station, a church on the corner of the site, and then you've got the city limits on this side of the street, and it only jogs in this section for the city limits. Everything else is only on the westerly side of Last Casses Pike, with our subdivision for Laurel Stone is on the other side, and then there is another subdivision further to the north. When we're looking at this area in 2022, the general plan had some different designations than what you're seeing today, so it was previously neighborhood commercial on the corner and suburban estate, and so when we did adopt the new general plan, this was designated FSA, most likely because we don't really want to encourage more annexation on that other side. But here, we believe taking a look at those commercial properties that are adjacent to the parent parcel may qualify it for an instance where we deviate and utilize that transition policy, and that would really be a determination of the Planning Commission and further city council at public hearings. We would like to set the public hearing for our August 6th date, so that we can go ahead and send out the appropriate notifications, publications, and hold a public hearing for that to take place. So, they did provide a site plan, just so that, you know, within the packet that shows potential layout that would work with the adjacent MMC project, and if there's any questions, there's representatives here in the audience, but otherwise, we believe that it's in good order to set for August 6th.
So, I have a question. So, where will the ambulance enter? Off of Pitts or off of Last Casses?
They can use either. So, the way that the overall site layout worked for the plan, there's actually a main roadway here that's a joint access, and there's access easement runs all the way to this section, so they would be able to enter on either street, and really, as we determine the site plan layout for that use, we'll get a better take on it, but they are already coordinating with the county. Pitts Lane at this area is actually in the county and requires a county right-of-way permit, so they'll have to do that, but in looking at it, woo, that's really, really tiny, I can't stand it. It's like, escape, escape. It's like, escape, escape. In that particular area, but it would be probably up to them and their layout as we look at it, at their site plan review process. So it would come back through staff as a full site layout for the property.
I would just think there, and I know we're not at site plan, but I think there would be some concern about the access for the ambulances, depending on how they're going to egress and ingress into this property. And if they're going to go out Pitts Lane, there's not a light there right now. So anyway, I just think that needs to be a topic of conversation.
Yeah, and here you can see on their kind of anticipated layout, here's that roadway that comes through the site, and then it comes to the north and back out Last Cassis. And then you can see here where their proposed building is. But as I can see here, I don't see any layout yet, how they're going to get the ambulances into that area. But again, I think this was just trying to show building footprint, open space, landscaping can fit within this size of a building, but we anticipate that that would be fully determined at site plan.
Sounds good.
I was going to say, and there's a representative here that can actually maybe further address that as well. There we go.
Good afternoon, Chair Halliburton and other Commission members. My name's Gordon Ferguson. I currently serve as the Vice President of Community Relations with the hospital. Joining me is Daphne David, our hospital CEO, Thomas Roddy, our hospital Chief Housing Officer. Just to address the concern here, Mr. Halliburton, we have been operating a freestanding ER over in the West Lawn area now for just over two years, and have found that in a freestanding ER situation, the vast majority of the folks coming to the emergency room are coming by private vehicle.
I see.
So there's probably maybe about 2% of our total visits that actually come by EMS. There are situations where we'll transfer a patient from West Lawn to the main hospital that sometimes require EMS transport, but the vast majority would be coming by private vehicle. The way that we are thinking on the layout of this building is it would be two canopy entrances, one for the general public and one for EMS, and that the EMS traffic would come through the East Pitts Lane entranceway.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Ferguson while I'm standing up at the podium?
Has a CON been obtained for this?
It has not. We are on the agenda for August.
If the CON is not granted, this property will be Zoned CH. What does MMC plan to do with it? I know you might not be able to speak to that, Mr. Ferguson.
I'll let Joey speak to that.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Joey P., CEO of Murfreesboro Medical Clinic, and the answer is I don't know yet. My expectation is at that CON hearing in August, that they will be considering concurrently both the application for the, this facility, as well as the facility that TriStar is planning at the corner of Warrior Drive and Highway 231. It's my belief that both of those facilities will more than likely get approved. And that's my recommendation. I've sent a letter of recommendation supporting both of those projects to the state. If you look at the application for the TriStar facility, and it talks about how it's going to serve the south side of Murfreesboro, and I know when we were doing our South Church facility, that was one of the concerns, the traffic, and that still remains a concern for people on that side of town trying to seek emergency care. And so, you know, I can look at that, and I can see support in my mind for the TriStar freestanding ED. Then you look at this one, and I would say the same thing. And as Ms. Smith mentioned, that our project, the annexation and rezoning of our purchase of that property, the Taylor Farm, for this development was unanimously approved by this body in the city council a couple of years ago. And I kept remembering the comments that some of the commissioners, both the city council members and the planning commissioners, were making about the need to have services closer to where people are, and how difficult it is to get across town. And so when Mr. Ferguson approached me about doing this project, it was one of those aha moments, because I'd not considered a freestanding ED when I was thinking about, okay, what are we going to do with that lot? We are committed to the first two lots, and even this one as well, that we're not going to have liquor stores and vape shops and things like that in those properties. We're putting those types of restrictions in the deeds, so that can happen. So I understand your concern, opening it to CH gives a lot more possibilities of things that may not fit as well with the character of the neighborhood, but I think the ability to revert it back to CF or something like that, should this fall through.
Well, so when is that meeting?
It's in August, about.
It's the last of August.
What day in August?
The 27th.
The 27th of August.
You're, if we do a first reading on this on the 6th?
That's here, we still got to go to council. We'll have that resolved by the time it goes to council.
I would anticipate a, if it is recommended for approval at Planning Commission on August the 6th, I would anticipate a city council public hearing probably the third Thursday of September. That would be the timeframe that I would expect.
I mean, yeah, Joey, you see where I'm going with this.
Absolutely.
My inclination is, my reservation is not with the freestanding ER. I think the freestanding ER at West Lawn is a great asset to our community, and I've said that to Mr. Ferguson many times. My reservation is what, I can't control the state, and if they don't approve that CON, I don't think commercial highway is an appropriate zoning for this parcel if it's not going to be a hospital. It's like, hospital or nothing for me. So I'll support it at Planning Commission, but with the statement that my support at council may not be there.
Contingent upon what the state does with the scene.
Correct.
I believe that depending on how the motion is drafted, if this planning commission does decide to make the recommendation to council, the recommendation could be conditional based upon the CON being granted. So that could be the recommendation that this body sends to the city council for its consideration.
I'll leave that up to the rest of you. If you want to make it conditional on that, that's fine. Otherwise, I'll see you when I get to council.
I don't think the applicant would have any issue with that, would he?
I really wouldn't, but I would encourage all of you, Ms. Abellwater and everyone else, write a letter of support for this. I can get you the gentleman's name to send it to and the address at the Health Facilities Commission about how this is going to help the community. I think about, the whole thing about this, this all of a sudden becomes the closest emergency room facility to my home on, out John Drake Highway in the Reedable area. And, you know, you may not know, I'm also a farmer. And so there's no telling what I'm going to get into on the farm, that all of a sudden I may need an ER pretty quickly, and all of a sudden this becomes the closest opportunity. And that's the same for people out in Milton, and even if you go beyond Milton into some of the other Wilson County, Cannon County, maybe even DeKalb County with folks coming from that way. I will also mention, our Last Cassis property is one of the more talked-about clinics that I'm hearing in the public. It's like, oh, when's Last Cassis going to open? So I think when Daphne, Gordon, and the Ascension team get this open, I think it's going to be well-received. So I would encourage you to write those letters of support.
Okay. Are we doing a neighborhood meeting? Did we say that prior to?
I would mention that. I've already had some discussions. One of our former doctors, Jimmy Carter, actually lives across the street. My personal veterinarian for my cattle actually also lives across the street.
You never cease to amaze me, Mr. P.
Man, a master of all trades and jack of none, whatever it is. A jack of all trades, master of none. But we've also had the conversation with an elder at Bethlehem Church of Christ there on the corner, I think it is, about their approval. I don't know if you can pull up the site plan, and I can share what Road Commissioner Brooks has asked for us to do with regard to improving Pitts.
Okay. I don't remember, I remember our vote at council being unanimous for this project, but I recall that the neighbor feedback was a little bit of a mixed bag. Am I remembering that correctly?
We had no criticism from the neighbors.
You can say no, that's okay.
Yeah. We had no criticism and opposition from the neighbors.
Was it pretty?
But if you see, if I touch this, is it going to turn around and make the line?
But I can make it go away.
Okay. So what Commissioner Brooks asked us to do was from about right here, come into the property. And when you get to here, the church has paved parking that is along the length of the road, but at some point it tapers in toward the church property. And so it's wider in a certain part. And I forget the distance that they asked, but it's something like a 20-foot roadbed at that point that will have to be created. Most of that will be along the site plan, along the property under question, as well as the detention pond site. It will encroach a little bit on the church as well, a few feet, and they have expressed a willingness and acceptance of that. And then it would be, I think, grinding, whatever it's called, milling down to a certain level, and then repaving all the way from here to the intersection with Last Cassis Pike.
Okay. Well, if there are no other questions, I will make a motion that we set a public hearing on August 6th. I'll leave my motion at that.
Say it.
Ms. Abellwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carron?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Good luck on the 22nd, gentlemen.
You want to be real fun, go next Thursday to the CON hearing for Montgomery County. It's going to be real fun.
I'll let you have that fun.
All right, our next item.
One thing.
Yes.
Gordon, you're terrible at retirement. You're supposed to be retired.
As bad as David Ives.
All right. Our next application is a zoning application for approximately 17.26 acres located along Casey Lane to be rezoned from CF and OG to PUD. Lenar is the applicant. Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, Chair Halliburton. The subject property we're looking at today is on Casey Lane just north of New Salem Highway and the Casey Lane intersection. We'll take a look at the adjacent land uses and zoning first. So this property is surrounded by a mixture of both commercial and residential uses, and the zoning reflects that. To the north of the subject property is Casey Lane Estate Apartment Homes, which is Zoned RM16. To the east is Casey Ridge Apartments, which is also Zoned RM16, as well as some vacant commercial fringe land. And then to the south is the Neighborhood Walmart Marketplace, the Walmart Neighborhood Marketplace, which is Zoned CF. And then to the west allows some vacant land that is Zoned CH and RM16 currently. You see them out, and we'll discuss the putt itself. So the putt itself is, includes 94 attached single-family homes and two commercial out parcels. The development is proposed to be in three phases, with the first phase being those 94 attached single-family homes, and then Phase 2 and 3 representing the commercial out parcels that are along Casey Lane. The attached homes and the residential portion of the putt are intended to be two stories with front porches and two car garages that are attached. The architecture of those homes will include 24-inch brick water tables on all sides, and I will scroll down so that you can see the proposed architecture for those. Those are the fronts, 24-inch brick water table with cement fiber above that water table. Those attached homes are also, as shown in the pattern book, are going to be on individual lots of record with 2,000 square foot minimum, 20-foot wide for those individual lots. And then the commercial out parcels that are along Casey are targeting neighborhood services, and we'll take a look at the loud uses, which are in the staff room. Here we go. And these are, the loud uses here have been pared down, they're reminiscent of the commercial fringe, but we're looking at more neighborhood services, restaurants, small-scale retail, some animal grooming, nursery schools, daycare centers, things that would serve the adjacent area, and be a little bit smaller scale from that standpoint. As far as access to the site, primary access is going to be off Casey Lane through two accesses. On the consent agenda, there was a plat that included these four lots here. Those four lots will have access easements, cross-access easements, and will be restricted to using just those two accesses to Casey, so they will not have any access to Casey Lane directly from the lot. They'll be using those city streets that are there. There is one stub to the west, which would be the bottom of the page here on the plan that you see, to connect into that vacant parcel that would be extended upon further development. As far as within the putt itself, the amenities that are included, there is a dog park in this location, a playground and pavilion here, and then they have walk-in trails, which you can see throughout around the detention pond, and then they have these smaller areas that are picnic pads that they're going to provide, a place for you to sit with some chairs, a table for residents to use. The mail kiosk is provided here as well, in that central area. And then as far as, I know one thing that the planning commission often asks about is guest parking. Parking for the individual sites is at four per driveway space for each individual home, so they meet our parking requirement there. Parking, guest parking has been provided, there's, those are two spaces there, two spaces here, and then the rest of them are in the back portion, three spaces that are associated along with that mail kiosk as well, and then some additional in the back portion close to the dog park as well. So there's some of that parking scattered throughout the development. The commercial sections of the development will rely on our design guidelines and on the zoning ordinance for those specific parking standards related to the developments that will occur there. So from a future land use perspective of this site, well, sorry, there are no exceptions for this site. I don't want to miss that. There's a little bit of an exception we'll discuss along with the future land use plan that'll be a little bit of a caveat to it, but we'll discuss that now. Future land use plan identifies this as auto-urban residential, which is looking at a density range of four to 12 units per acre, and is recommending RS10 all the way down to our RSA and RD zoning districts. So there's a lot of range that includes everything from single-family detached to attached homes. It does have some criteria in it when you are providing townhomes, single-family attached products, on lots of four acres or 4.1 acres or larger, that you can only have a maximum of 20% of that acreage, consistent of attached residential or townhomes, and then only 40% of the total units on the site can be townhomes as well. As you notice, this is a fully attached product, so they're not meeting those two thresholds. Staff does, however, feel like this may be an opportunity to use the transition policy. In this area, existing development, you have commercial at the intersection of New Salem and Casey Lane, the transitions along Casey Lane into existing apartment complexes, and there's even some RM16 zoning in place that would allow townhomes or apartments to be built at that location. So it may be appropriate to use the transition policy and allow that exception to the land use plan, but planning commission will need to discuss that and warrant if that is a... use plan, but planning commission will need to discuss that and warrant if that is an exception that they are willing to make. Planning commission will need to discuss the rezoning and set a public hearing. Staff has recommended on August 6th for that public hearing date. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and Mr. Tyler Fisher, who's representing the applicant, is here as well.
Any questions for the applicant or Mr. Donovan? And any opinions on the transition base?
Where are we with the sewage capacity upgrades in that corridor? I know we had a hard stop last year.
I don't know that this was included in that area.
Mr. Gore is giving his thumbs up from the audience.
Is that official on the record? Yeah. I'm okay with the transition. I mean, you've got apartments right here, you've got a single family to the, I guess that would be the north. I'm okay with the transition.
Is that a motion?
Motion to set the public hearing for August 6th.
Second.
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Halliburton?
All right, our next application is a zoning application for approximately 14.9 acres located along Franklin Road to be rezoned from PUD, the Kingdom Ridge PUD, to PCD. Swanson Development LP is the applicant, and Mr. Donovan, you're up again.
Thank you, Chair Halliburton. The subject property we're discussing today is between Conquest Road and Covenant Boulevard along Franklin Road. As far as the adjacent land uses for this property, they are also a mixture of commercial and residential uses. To the north is detached single-family residential that is within the unincorporated county and zoned RM within the county. To the east and to the south are single-family detached homes that are a portion of the Kingdom Ridge PUD that is currently the zoning in place on this property. And then to the west is commercial highway zoned land, and is the location of the current Aldi and the current under construction and under development Kingdom Ridge Storage. So a little information on the existing Kingdom Ridge pod and how this site is currently proposed in that pod to be used, is this is currently identified as a church or an institutional site within that pod. Already, it does allow approximately 41 single-family detached homes that would be on 15,000 square foot to 12,000 square foot lot sizes, and that is currently what's permitted in the Kingdom Ridge PUD for this site. The Kingdom Ridge Commercial PCD, and let's jump down here where I have a concept, is proposing eight lots with this PCD. The eight lots, the uses for the eight lots are derived out of our commercial highway districts. There are some exceptions to that. Anything that was allowed by conditional use has just been excluded from being permitted at all. It won't be allowed by conditional use or permitted outright. And then tobacco, vape, and dispensaries has been expressly excluded, and then automobile service and gasoline sales has been limited to these three lots, which are one, seven, and eight, and that's to keep those type uses as far separated from the residential portions of this development as well. So the primary access for this site will be off of Covenant Boulevard on an extension of Malikite Drive that'll serve the middle of these properties. Staff have been discussing with, and this is a little bit of update from your staff report, to completely prohibit access from Conquest Road since it is serving and fronting on to current single-family residential lots. That access has been removed. We are going to ask the applicant to expressly prohibit that in the pod. That express prohibition isn't in the pod, but at the neighborhood meeting that we'll talk a little bit later on, they said that they were going to do that, so we'll get that before you see this again, but they will not have access to Conquest Drive. So Lot 6, 5, 4, 3 will either use Malikite or this common access on Franklin Road. And as a part of providing some amount of buffer for the commercial to the existing single-family residential, the applicant has also provided a Type E buffer that will go along both the eastern and the southern side of this property. There's also some utility easements in there, so it'll be the utility easements plus outside of those utility easements will be that Type E buffer. So there will be a large area there that is either green space in the form of grass or that actual buffer, and then they will be providing street landscaping along Covenant So the design standards and parking requirements within this pod are also deferring to the city's current design standards. They're not proposing any modification to those design standards or anything over and above those. The same goes forward with the parking standards, so we'll look at those individually as they come in with the site plans if this were to be approved. As far as the future land use in this area, it is called out as public/private institutional as being the appropriate land use, which typically what we're looking for there is either the institutional uses, government uses, hospitals, those type facilities. So this is a little bit of a deviation from that, since when the land use plan was done, it wasn't contemplated that this would be developed, anything past what was permitted in the existing pod. Again, this is an opportunity to potentially use the transition plan. You know, this could be a potential opportunity for the transition plan. Staff does have some concerns about that, as we have recommended to the applicant in our meetings prior, that this area be commercial and then an area here that would be new residential be provided, just to provide some transition from that existing commercial. We've had that discussion several times with the applicant, and the plan you see today is what they've sent to us. But it would be, you know, again, an item for this body to discuss if they feel that the transition is appropriate to use here as well. I'm happy to answer. I'm sorry, forgot, I almost missed the neighborhood meeting section here. So we did have a neighborhood meeting that was held just last night. We had about 25 people show up to that. Mr. Blomley was there with me. If I missed something, Mr. Blomley, feel free to chime in, but main concerns that came from the neighborhood at that meeting last night were with regard to permitted uses. There was concern about gasoline and automobile services even being allowed on those three lots. They also had concerns about liquor stores and self-storage being permitted within the proposed PCD, which neither of those are currently permitted. All that is allowed is automobile service and the gasoline sales. They also mentioned not wanting metal within those areas, and there was some concern about a full access being provided between Lots 6 and 7 to Franklin Road, which I know the applicant's been in discussion with TDOT about that, and the city has set in on those, and TDOT hasn't made a determination yet as to whether that'll be permitted to be full access.
Were the neighbors against the access or for it?
They were against the full access there. They had concern. There was mention of accidents that had occurred in the area already, and they had concern about what would be, I guess, that left-hand turn-in movement causing conflict.
So speaking of that, if I'm looking at this, and again, I'm getting ahead of myself, but from a site plan perspective, are they not proposing, if they are allowed the Franklin Road entrance, for that not to go all the way through those four lots?
Yeah, so they are proposing it would be a full, they would have cross-access back there.
Okay.
And they are seeking full access from TDOT.
All right.
But there is a red light at Covenant and, is that Brinkley? There's a red light at this intersection right here.
Correct. At this one?
Yes.
That's correct.
So that slows the traffic down some. So yeah, I would be in support of that, having access.
And so y'all would need to discuss this, and staff has recommended a public hearing for August 6th. Happy to answer any questions, and I know Mr. Claude Roundtree is here representing the applicant as well.
It was a good neighborhood meeting last night. There was a lot of good conversation between the neighbors and the applicant, and I think at the end of the meeting, you know, the applicant had some food for thought about, you know, whether or not they were going to make any adjustments before the public hearing, but I think it was a good opportunity for folks to share their input and, you know, help the applicant to potentially make adjustments to the plan that could make it more palatable to them.
Do we have a list of the permitted uses?
We sure do.
Yes, sir. All right. So you will be able to see the permitted uses in front of you. This is heavily derived from CH, but not necessarily all-inclusive of what you would see in CH.
So I thought you said they were wanting to have a liquor store, but I don't see it listed on here.
So they were wanting to exclude liquor store and mini storage. And from the discussion we had last night, the applicant agreed, and you'll see this at the public hearing, they're going to add it to that prohibited uses section and just explicitly prohibit it.
And just for clarification, anything that is not on the list of allowable uses is prohibited? The prohibited uses list is just to make it extra clear that those uses are not allowed.
The legal term is super-duper prohibited.
Yeah, I liked it.
Thank you, Mr. Tully.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Donovan or the applicant?
So you said the city had requested residential on the south side to kind of, instead of doing full commercial on the whole property?
Yeah, that's been planning staff's feedback from the beginning, when this came in as an inquiry, and it was more to allow that gradual transition, you know, when the existing homeowners along, I can't remember the street to the south math. Pillar? And then those along Conquest, that was proposed in the pod to be a church or additional homes, which hasn't come to fruition at this time.
Is there like a reason? I guess the developers not wanting, they want to go for commercial, I guess?
I would defer to them to answer that.
Okay.
So we did knock on doors, going down Conquest and Pillar.
If you'll mention your name.
Oh, Joe Swanson, third. We did walk down Pillar and Conquest, knock on doors, speak to the residents that are currently residing there, ask what they would prefer, whether they'd like to see the landscape buffer or the residential houses. I think we had one that would prefer to see the houses. The balance wanted to see the landscape buffer between, so that's why we've kind of pushed this all towards commercial.
Any other questions while Mr. Swanson's up here? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Donovan? And if not, do we have a motion to set a public hearing?
So moved to set the public hearing for August 6th.
Second.
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Halliburton?
Aye. Next item is annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 22.5 acres located along Veterans Parkway and Old Salem Road. Randall and Deborah Robinson and the City of Murfreesboro are the applicants. Again, Mr. Donovan.
Thank you again, Chair Halliburton. So the subject properties being considered with this annexation, there are three that the city owns that are around the intersection of Veterans Parkway and Old Salem Road. They're remnants left over from the Veterans Parkway road construction project. And then the Robinsons own this parcel right here that's being considered for annexation. There's also approximately 710 feet of Old Salem Road right-of-way and 300 feet of Veterans Park right-of-way being considered. The Rutherford County Highway Commission reviewed and consented to annexation of those right-of-ways as well at their June 23 meeting. The city's three properties are vacant, and then the property controlled by the Robinsons currently does have a couple of accessory buildings on it currently. This annexation does have a companion rezoning request for a portion of the project, the portion that the Robinsons own has the annexation request, or, excuse me, the rezoning request accompanying it that contemplates 52 single-family detached homes and 31 attached single-family homes. So this property is within the City of Murfreesboro's urban growth boundary, and is also contiguous on the north and southern boundaries to the current city limits of the City of Murfreesboro, and it's also within the service infill line within our comprehensive plan. Staff is currently working with other departments to prepare a plan of services, and will provide that to you at the public hearing, as how, if they can serve the properties upon annexation. Planning commission will need to discuss the annexation petition and schedule a public hearing. Staff has recommended the public hearing be scheduled for September 3rd.
Too much going on on August 6th? No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, we have to push it out an extra month because of the requirements of state law.
Thank you, sorry. All right, any questions for Mr. Donovan?
I think we carried some over to August 6th from the last meeting anyway.
Yeah, we do have, we have six public hearings scheduled for August 6th.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Donovan, or do we have a motion to set a public hearing?
Motion to set the public hearing for August 6th.
Oh, September.
Second. Or September. September 3rd, my bad.
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Halliburton?
Aye. Next application is a zoning application for approximately 9.26 acres located along Old Salem Road to be rezoned PRD simultaneous with annexation Summit Development LLC is the applicant. Again, Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, Chair Halliburton. So the subject property, this is the property that I mentioned that was owned by the Robinsons, and it is just to the east of the Veterans Parkway, Old Salem Road intersection along Old Salem Road. As far as adjoining, adjacent land uses, it is again a mixture of commercial and residential uses that are either zoned or zoned appropriately for their current use. To the north of this piece of the property is vacant land that is part of the To the north of this, this piece of the property is vacant land that is part of the Marymont Springs PRD, along with some single-family detached homes that are within, within unincorporated Rutherford County. To the east are additional single-family detached residential that is within the county as well, along with some vacant land that is owned CH and the, within the city limits of Murfreesboro. And then to the south and to the west is also CH-zoned land that's vacant, except for a cell tower that is located in the middle of one of those CH-zoned properties. And that's also within the city limits of Murfreesboro. Let me get to layout for the pod, and we'll actually discuss the Robinson and the PRD. So, it comprises a total of 83 residential units. 52 of those are detached, single-family homes, and 31 are attached, single-family homes. The single-family detached homes will be on a minimum lot of 6,000 square feet and 50-foot wide. The attached homes will be handled through an HPR, so they'll be on a single lot of record. The attached, both the attached and detached homes will be one-to-two-story designs with front porches, rear patios, and two-car garages. Each of the homes will include a 30 to 36-inch brick water table on all four sides with cement fiber board above that water table on the, on all four sides. And then some vinyl will be, you know, in the soffit and trim area, that'll be limited. The detached homes will be a minimum of 1,400 square feet, and the attached homes will be at a minimum of 1,200 square feet. So, side access will be from, from Old Salem Road to begin with, that's currently the only access. There are additional, three additional stubs provided to the neighboring vacant properties, one to the east, one to the south, and then one to the, the west as well. So, there are stubs that will eventually connect out to, as other properties develop. So, the, the site includes various amenities, including playlawns that are located in this general area here, along with the mail kiosk and a parking area that's associated with it, and a separate guest parking area that's in, sandwiched in between two playlawns that will help serve the attached homes. And then there's an additional play area tucked in that's also set up where it could be used as soccer fields as well. As far as landscaping and buffer yards go, you can see there's a 10-foot buffer yard here, and then here along the commercial, and a 15, or a type-D buffer that backs that single-family residence that borders it, and then a 20-foot wide landscape yard that is along Old Salem Road as well. I've already discussed the architecture a little, they have provided quite a bit, and I will scroll through that. All of these have, you know, at least the minimum of that 24, or that 30 to 36-inch water table on them for the single-family detached options that they're providing examples of. And then further on down in here, we'll also see the single-family attached that has that same water table option as, or water table that is required as well. Sorry, let me skip down so we can see some of the-
Making me dizzy.
And this is some of the examples they've provided for the attached product. So, there are a couple exceptions to note here for this PRD. There is a proposed exception for a reduction in a corner secondary side yard setback for that, that is for the attached project, product, to reduce it from 35 feet to 15 feet. And then the second is for the required driveway parking, this is also in that attached, attached product. They're providing 100, we need to provide 102 spaces to meet our parking requirements. They've provided 78 to, so they're not fully meeting that requirement. What they're proposing in the CCRs will restrict garages, garages to be used for parking, and that size is specified and does match what we require in our zoning ordinance to count as garage parking, if that exception is granted. From a future land use perspective, this is identified as auto-urban residential, which is looking for that four to 12 units per acre, and then the range of zoning districts that include everything from RS 10 to RSA and RD zoning districts. It also has the designations that I mentioned when townhomes are included, that there's less than 20% of the overall acreage being townhomes, and then 40% of the overall unit count being townhomes. They meet those stipulations, so there's no exception there. They are in compliance with the PRD to what we would be looking for, for the AUR designation, even for that attached housing unit criteria. Plan and Commission will need to discuss the rezoning request and schedule a public hearing. Staff has recommended September 3rd. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and Mr. Rob Mulchan is here as well.
Can you, on this flat, can you show us where this reduction of side setback you're talking about?
Yes, sir. And after reviewing a little further, we may be able to, to remove that. The assumption here is that that is occurring for this, which is actually outside of right-of-way and in an easement. I'm gonna have some discussion to make sure I understand with the applicant, that's my understanding where that's at, but that, that exception may be able to be-
Yeah.
-permitted, or removed, since that's a temporary turnaround.
Yeah, I'm with you. That's not terrible, in my opinion. Alright, any other questions for Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, Mr. Donovan, going back to the parking.
Yes, sir.
You said that they have 78 or 73?
So, they have 70, 78 spaces, which, the driveways for the attached product, so we're specifically looking at this area. So, the driveways that are associated with that will hold two to three cars, so they're, they're not consistent as to be, and all be able to hold two, or all be able to hold three. So, some of them will meet with the three-bedroom or parking requirement, but not all of them will. But they do, this is also the piece that has the guest parking, that's 10 spaces included and intended to be used with those attached units, and they are also gonna restrict it via their CCRs for parking in the garages.
Other questions or comments?
Reggie, were you okay with the parking?
Well, just looking at it, she's a pretty good long walk.
They probably need to hear it now, before the public hearing. If anybody else has an opinion.
Rob, are you, are you civil or is Matt, who's civil? Rob, okay. Matt wore that bright shirt, it's hard to miss him back there in the neon orange.
I was gonna wear an orange shirt today, I'm glad I didn't. Good afternoon, Rob Mulchan, SEC. Any questions, sorry?
Uh, well, I had a question about those corner lots from when we had our meeting. Did you beef up the architecture on that? Specifically, it was like 44, 31, 38, 37, 16, 5, 45.
Yes, we know, we did make the notation in the book that those had to be a higher-quality architecture on those, so as we go through this, we did submit a very large package of elevations, because our, my client does not have a set end-user at this point in time, so they're kinda courting a whole bunch of different builders, so we wanted to put in the book as many representations of the architecture of all those builders they're courting at this point in time, so that's what's in there. So, if we get into the deeper side of this, they will know that those lots do have to have an upscaled side elevation facing those corners.
Okay. And then I think Reggie was asking about, which is probably what you and I discussed, I think is what you and I discussed in the meeting, were you able to squeeze out any additional guest parking, particularly on the south side of this property?
Ideally, if, it's, it really boils down to, we can get this temporary cul-de-sac to go away in the future on that side, assuming the property next door develops out, we could look at retrofitting that temporary area down there for some additional guest parking on that end, on that side as well. I know that property right now does have some people looking at it, so that would be the opportunity that we can go ahead and look at an alternative to show additional guest parking on that south side when that parking court does go away.
I wouldn't be surprised if people park in that little cul-de-sac right there.
Exactly what they're gonna do.
You know, they're just gonna line that cul-de-sac up.
You mean our fire safety, actually, fire safety can't even make a turn there, can they?
It's set for fire safety size.
Well, they can if there's four cars parked there. Which if I'm lot, if I'm those corner townhome units, that's exactly-
You're gonna park right there in the cul-de-sac.
Yeah. Probably won't even park in my driveway.
That's what concerns me, is being able to make sure that emergency vehicles can get in, out, and assist when they need to assist, but just looking at this, you know, this parking, you know, the guest parking is way at the front of the, the entrance, you know, just pretty good walk. Not convenient.
Is it, it's 10 up there, right?
Correct.
Yeah. I mean, just an idea, could you break it up like five up in the north, and then five in the south at all, and?
We'll, we'll definitely, between now and the public hearing, we'll look at some options on that. Really, the biggest problem is that TBA easement kinda precludes us, we're kinda squished between that cul-de-sac and the TBA easement, so that's really the, you know, that burden of that TBA running across the property really limits us on options, so.
What's this again?
One additional question, how wide is that, the main street coming in right there?
The main street coming off Old Salem?
People like fires.
The one that?
The actual street coming off Old Salem?
No, right here where the, the townhouses and the additional parking is supposed to be, yes.
Oh, that there is your, is a 24-foot pavement surface with a five-foot turned-down curb sidewalk on it? So, it's a standard. It's shown on page, page 45. I'm sorry. It's the next, the last page.
Page 315 of the PDF, I believe. 316. Thank you, Dizzy.
There we go.
It is.
Yeah.
He's gonna ask about, he's asking about the width of the road, also the sidewalks and the curb cuts.
So, it's a 34-foot wide access easement, so it's 24-foot of pavement, but five-foot sidewalks on the other side. Do you wanna bring up your point about the fire?
I just personally think there needs to be some additional guest parking. I'm more concerned with people parking on the streets.
And on this one, just as a reminder, we do have, we will have a month and a half before the public hearing, and so we'll be happy to continue to work with, with the applicant on, on finding opportunities for additional guest parking before then.
Yeah, I agree. I'll take it offline with you, Rob, a lot later. I mean, I, 'cause I, I'm fine with density, I just wanna try to squeeze in some extra guest parking and make sure that, if at all possible, our fire safety vehicles can get-
Understood.
Is there a way to add additional parking to the, where the mail kiosk is positioned?
Yes, we definitely could add more parking to that area up there. We were, you know, we were utilizing that as, you know, as much more of our green space on that side, outdoor recreational space, for just throwing frisbee football, that kinda stuff on that side, so we can definitely look at adding more parking on that townhome portion of that, of that open space up there. But I think it gets back to the point that it would be heavily loaded on the north end of the townhomes and not so much the south end of the townhomes, so.
Right.
But we'll, we'll take a look at some options and work with staff to, before we get back to the public hearing, to make certain, try to take care of your concerns in regards to the parking on the cul-de-sac.
Sounds good.
And increase the number of guest spaces.
Thank you, Rob.
You're welcome.
Alright.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for September 3rd, subject to the staff comments.
Second.
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is staff reports and other business, and this is a monthly update from our Director of Land Management and Planning. Fancy title.
Thank you, Chair Halliburton and Plan Commission, good to see all of you. Thanks for putting in the, the long hour today, plus, let me get this pulled up. Short presentation today, knew that you'd have a long one, so I just wanted to go over just a few things in this month's monthly update. So, first off, just start up with the data. Looking at the highlighted line here, that's our site plans, those are a little bit flat from last year, and they're a little bit down from the previous year. Submittals in May are a little up, but compared to last year, you know, we're not, we're not looking as good when you're looking at, or, excuse me, we're up a lot in May and a little bit flat from previously. Public records request, again, that's where people are coming in, asking for public record, public records to see what is going on at a site, what's, what are the rights that they may have there? That gives us a little bit of indication of things to come when people are looking at doing some larger developments. And so, you see that those are a little bit flat from last year, but, you know, it's, it's still, they're still coming in, just not as much as they have in the past. Due diligence meetings and pre-app meetings, you see that the due diligence meetings are down from previous months, a little bit up from last year, but not that much. Pre-app, we're a little bit flat. We didn't start distinguishing between certain meetings, pre-app meetings were lumped in with others, so we don't have a lot of data on the pre-app meetings themselves, going back very far. On department administration, you know, we, we had two project engineers that, that left and went back to Metro. We were able to fill one of those positions with Lee Holloman, and he's doing a good job. He's, he's learning, and Katie Knoll is doing a good job of training him. We still have one position open. We have some pretty good applicants that we're scheduling interviews with, so we hope to have somebody fill in that position within the next 30 days or so. We also have a planner position that's open, and so we have a lot of applicants for that position. We'll be going through those in the next week or so, and then starting to set some interviews for that position as well. We have created an additional zoning inspector position this year, in this year's budget. We've had a lot of, obviously, you know, our zoning inspector goes out and inspects a lot of different things out in the community, but he's also our, our zoning enforcer, and so we have a lot of, lot of enforcement opportunities in the city, and we've sort of rewritten that job description so that the new zoning inspector, the additional zoning inspector- that job description so that the new zoning inspector, the additional zoning inspector, will also have opportunities to work on nights and weekends when we, when some of the things are going on in our community we don't typically see on a regular shift. So that position will be created to help with some of those nights and weekends, see what's going on in the community. And then lastly, on department administration, we're making progress in our design guidelines update. We had a meeting today for an hour and a half with a lot of our stakeholders, really good meeting, talked about formal open spaces. Staff previously went through our entire Chart 1 to see where are those formal open spaces, you know, what we would recommend for any changes for that, where they would go, and then maybe an alternative, instead of formal open space, maybe there's some enhanced landscaping that can go in where it doesn't really make sense to have formal open space. So we had good discussions on that today, still making progress. We have a cherry lane meeting, cherry lane study meeting tomorrow, and so we're continuing to make progress on that as well. And lastly, just wanted to let you know that the mayor is conducting a town hall August 4th, so we do invite planning commission members to come out to that as well, as well as members of the community. First Presbyterian Church, 210 North Spring Street. Topics to include Town Creek, daylight of Town Creek, downtown traffic, homelessness, and public safety. And that is all I have. Any questions?
Are council members invited to that town hall?
Your planning commission members and council members, yes, you are invited.
Missy invited, I knew it.
You're invited.
Thanks. I'll beat him.
All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. All right. Any other business to come before the planning commission?
Yes, sir.
All right. We're adjourned.